Welcome to the Bernie episode of Tell Me Something Good. I'm your host, Jelley.
And I'm your host, Jackie. And today we have a very special guest. His name is Kevin Garcia. We're gonna get into his campaign, get to know him a little bit. Hi, Kevin. It's good to have you here.
A little bit about me, so you guys kind of know. My name is Kevin Garcia. My parents are both from Guatemala, so I'm 100% Guatemalteco. They came here, I like to explain this story with a backpack and a dream. I was born in Los Angeles, California during the nine, early 90s. Economy was tough, so they came, out of all the places, they came here to Ashboro, Carolina. So I got here when I was four years old, so that's, I'm 34, 30 years ago. So I started kindergarten, literally Ashboro City College. And just a little background, I went to, my background education route is, I'm a physical therapist assistant, massage therapist, business owner, educator.
Good to know. Tell us something good.
Oh, my youngest daughter right now just started walking within the last month, so that's the biggest win.
Is this your first baby?
Second.
Second baby? Two daughters? Oh, I bet, that's gonna be fun.
Babies and even our puppy is a girl. So I'm the only guy in the house.
Well, that is amazing. We are gonna get into our Something Good, but our Something Good is really that we're back to filming and we're having two guests today.
Yeah, we haven't filmed in a month, so we're glad to be back and have them and to see what they have to say about their campaign.
Get to know them. So we'll have Kevin first, and then we are gonna be having Jennifer second. I have some questions for you. I know you talked about your family being from Guatemala and, and you're running for city council. Us, I really don't know, and this is bad, y'all, so if y'all know, I'm, you know, I should know these things, but I really do not know what city council is. Or what their role is. Can you explain that to us?
Yeah, yeah, I'll kind of, I'll take a step back and just spin it from the, from the top. Every city, we're here in Greensboro now, it's the same, but in Ashboro, there's one mayor, which is what Jen's running for. There are seven city council members which make up all the rules, the laws, they, so they have an odd number, so if they vote for yes, three no, or vice versa, they can accept or reject a law or policy, anything on Ashboro. So the example is when you wake up in the morning, if you live in Ashboro, you brush your teeth, turn on the faucet, flush your toilet, take a shower. That's all the stuff that we vote on with the infrastructure, the stuff under the ground, the stuff you see, the sidewalks, the police, public safety, fire. I mean, everything you think about it, business, like everything you see in Ashboro and the growth you've seen with all the sportsplex and all that. We have Starbucks finally, voting on those things. It takes a team. And then there's also education, sheriff, there's a lot of, every city has the same setup, but that's kind of how our setup is in Ashboro. City council, so we're, I'm running first Latino ever, so don't feel bad, because like, I didn't know what it was until within the last few months as well. Latinos usually don't vote. I'm the first Latino that I know of in history for Ashboro, North Carolina to even be running. So for us Latinos, like, obviously, I'm doing it for all the communities, but especially for like our Latino communities. You guys know, it's representing, having a voice, a face, somebody to represent, especially somebody younger, you know, somebody with, with some experience with business in town. So that's what basically we're gonna bring to the table for the first time ever, and it's just a blessing to be here, you know, with the opportunity.
I did not know those things. That is amazing.
None of us do, really. It's like, it's new to our, like, we're first generation, you know?
Yeah.
Like college students, our parents came from Mexico, Guatemala, so we're the first, like, we're the next gen, you know, like, like coming up, you know?
And it's good that you are, you know, putting yourself out there, because I think the younger community, this is how we learn things. Younger, y'all, I'm considering myself young, okay? I learned through, like, listening to podcasts, you know, a lot of the people who are probably in office right now, they're like passed down from generations. And so you do sports therapy full-time and you're running for city council. How did that come about?
Like, oh, yeah, so, business owner, so I'm a small business owner. I had been doing it already, I started super small, that's my business called Garcia Sports Therapy and Mobile Events. So I started just traveling, like I would pull up to soccer fields, any business that would call me, hey, are you, you know, or our Latino community, like, hey, can you come, come do some services? So I didn't even have a location. It grew quickly so much that I was like, okay, we have a market here. Ended up getting a little place, like, kind of this size, like started with a small little space, ended up expanding to Nautilus, the gym, where I saw you last. That's like our, that's our headquarters, and that's where this probably the start of this came, because my business started small. That got us a lot in downtown on Fable Street, a lot of like recognition. Quickly within, if you Google, like, massage in Ashboro, we're number one, thank God, you know? So it's just within months, like, it just blew up, blew up. Now we have a new employee, and you keep, people are like, Kevin, you know, you have a really big platform. Like your demographics are like, you're like a restaurant at Taco Loco, like we see all, you see all communities there, for sure, a lot of Latinos, but we have a little bit of a melting pot.
Yeah, everything.
Is, so people were like, hey, you know, like you're looked upon a leader, like, would you be up to this for this city council? And I was like, city council, what is this? You know, like, talk to me, like, and then, long story short, I got a lot of education on it, and I was like, you know what? This is, this seems like this is what, what's next, this is, this sort of is what I was looking for, praying about, how can I impact my community bigger? So that's why we're running now, and it's, it's really impactful, it can impact thousands of people, you know, so it's amazing.
I love that. We're gonna get into some of our questions that we came up with together.
What inspired you to run for city council?
You kind of just answered that, the community.
You want to see more diversity.
Just having, having the right people, like especially you guys see the stuff going on in, I saw it on the news, Chicago or whatever, the immigrant thing, where they're, they're gonna do like a raid or whatever. That can happen in Ashboro if we have the wrong people in Ashboro. That's just, so there's a lot of like, it looks small, like what we're doing, but it starts local and it goes to state, federal, but that can happen in Ashboro. So if we get the wrong people in there, so it has like, a lot of impact, you know?
Something you would vote on, on city council, like allowing that or not?
Well, it would be, so mayor, mayor would be the one that, everything runs through mayor. But if that policy comes to the table, for sure, that's something that, you know, we all have to vote on. And of course, you know, the Latino, and I have immigrants in my family, you know?
Yeah.
Like, you know, I'm gonna vote for that community to help our communities out and try to find solutions, can we? We did it 10 years ago. I represent a lot of faith-based communities in Ashboro, especially the Latinos, and we did it like 10 years ago, where we got these IDs. It was through an organization, I don't know if you guys remember, but we, we weren't able to get them licensed, but at least they had a form of ID. In Burlington, if you get pulled over, you don't have papers, and you get the wrong police, you could be deported to a different country, to a jail, in some island. Here in Ash, in Ashboro, in Ashboro, they'll usually just give you a ticket and let you be about your way. But all these are little things that if they pass the wrong laws, you know, against our communities, it can be pretty bad. And that's where we, you know, trying to step in for our people, you know?
Yeah, it's important for us to, for the Latino community to have a voice in there.
Yes, and that's where I'm like, for you guys, I was like, we need to inspire the young Latinos who are 18 to 30 to come out and vote, because we never vote. Like, I'm, I'll be honest, I've never voted for local, because I didn't know anybody there. They had people that already were in line, and there was never Latino, so it's like, who am I gonna go support? I don't know anybody, so this is the first, that's why I'm really doing these things, and also like, hey, let's motivate our people, because we're, we have a big potential to impact a lot of people now. But even if we don't win, our future, the kids, like our, you know, the next generation that's coming up right now, there, I can't tell you how many dozens of people are like, Kevin, I'm gonna run for my position in my county and my city, because like what you're doing, being the first to do something, has motivated me to stand up for my community and my people. It's impactful, it's bigger than me. I'm just a guy that my name's on the sign, but this is, God put me here, I'm just doing his work, you know, so I'm just here to be the messenger, you know?
And it takes a lot, and we'll get into this in one of the other questions that we have, but it does take a lot to step out and be a voice in Ashboro, because especially for things like this.
For sure.
Because there's so much of what people are used to, and then there's like a Latino running, and it's like, what? Who, what's going on? Like, this is not what Ashboro is used to. So I think it's amazing that you're, you know, setting that example, even for the younger generation, that you can run, and it doesn't have to be scary.
For sure.
To run for these things. That leads us to this question. Have you encountered any challenges or biases during your campaign due to your identity? If so, how have you handled it?
I would say my identity for sure, being the first Latino ever to run for city council in Ashboro has got a lot of attention. We have 30,000 people in Ashboro. They say the numbers are close to 40% is Latino. Whenever I posted it, I'm running for city council and Facebook and Instagram, my page shot up to 130K like views. So that means every single person in Ashboro saw like this guy, who is this guy running? Plus all my Triad Charlotte, I use my business coverage Charlotte, the Raleigh areas. So I call the, my business where I work at, the gym, is my headquarters, to answer this question better. And usually every single day, somebody's like, Kevin, I'm gonna vote for you, Kevin, I'm gonna, you know, support you, anything you need, I'm there. But of course, being the first, there's also gonna be like a little bit of, some people are probably not gonna be too happy with it, right? Quickly within the room, or whenever we have these meetings, you can tell people who are for you and people who are against you. For the most part, I've been very blessed that we haven't got any negative issues, like everything's just, for the most part, people are excited for, for that we're doing something first. And people are just being very encouraging, and thankfully, so far it's been all love. The polls open up in less than two weeks, so that's when it's like really gonna get game time and probably gonna get a little bit more competitive. But right now, it's just been great, like, it's all love, you know?
But I think that's good to hear, because I feel like sometimes you see things online, or you think, you're probably like, what are people saying? Or, but I have, like, even I'm, like on Facebook, I've seen only positive things as well, so that's really good, and that speaks a lot on you as well. But you know, it's just positive, positive vibe.
All good, all good.
Yes.
Are there any decisions you are wanting to implement when you are elected that we currently don't have?
So decisions, we haven't gotten to the meat of it yet, just because we haven't, you know, given the opportunity, right? Big thing that is gonna be in part of my campaign, just for all communities, is business growth. I work at Random Community College as a business director, and especially I work with the Latino communities, open up their LLCs, small businesses. We also help nonprofits open up, so it's something that we, and being a business owner, so that's something I eat, live and breathe every single day. Trying to attract new businesses is one of my biggest things for all, all communities. Imagine, we're here in Greensboro, I'm sure they're known for Hops Burger, I don't know if you guys have been there, but they're like number one in like the state, right? We wanna be able to be like, hey, like, let me, I wanna attract a business like that to come to Ashboro potentially, right? So why, why not bring them to Ashboro if we have the space, and I can call you for real estate, call up our mutual friend, hey, he can build it, or he can fix it up, right? And then we, we all work together, and that creates more jobs, growth, you know, better for the school systems that we talked about earlier. So that's my biggest thing is to bring business, but as well, help out, you know, the Latino community. That's my big, my big forefront of priorities.
As someone who saw like my parents start their business, there were so many things that we did not know, and so many things that we're learning, even now.
Yeah.
So I think having that, someone like you to talk about these things, we didn't know what an LLC was, we didn't know that you had to do those things for tax purposes.
Right.
And, you know, that's something that they've had to learn the hard way. You learn it the hard way, but it's a learning experience, and it almost makes you like, think, well, it's too complicated to open a business, might as well not do it. You know, like, for people who think of all the, like, once these problems arise, it's like, oh gosh, now we have to do this. But if you're educated and you know, hey, when you open a business, this is what you have to do, write this off, do this.
Yes.
These are things that we don't know, even when I got into real estate, I didn't know that I had to keep my receipts for everything, you know?
And see, we do it for free at the college.
That is amazing.
Nonprofit at the school, so it's like, trust me, it's, and that's a lot of this with everything, is education, you know? Especially with our Latino community, but all, providing education, a lot of people didn't know that we're there and provide free services. Like if your parents would have came to us, we would have gave you every single step, like, go here, do this, make sure this is good, before you even buy, you know? Like all these little things, like, we just give it to you for free, like, because we work for the college, you know, and in our city of Ashboro. So it's just little things like that, that, trust me, I went opening my business, I didn't know a lot of it either. There's a lot of mistakes I made in the beginning, but I'm thankful that I went through those things, because now with my new hire coming on board, she doesn't have to go through any of that. If for her it's been a seamless, like, let's get up and running, start 100 miles an hour. I had to start a rocky rope that success looks like that, you know, thankfully here now, but yeah, so I, exactly, that's exactly the stuff, educating our communities. Win or lose, we're gonna impact thousands, and I can't tell you how many like people have been calling us already, like, Kevin, can you help be on this board? Can you help with this, like, cause, can you help with this fundraiser? So even if we lose, hopefully we win, but like, I think it's gonna help, it's gonna impact thousands of people.
You've already done.
Already, and just making history with the Latino community, just, this is also state perspective. There's 27, out of all the thousand counties in Ashboro, there's 100, right? And 27 Latinos are representing the whole state. Six of them are in Random County, three of, three of us that you know, you guys know are in Ashboro. So just, this is, this is, that's what the numbers are, this is, and it's never been this high, ever. So already, even if we all, 27 lose, we've made history. But I'm pretty sure, I have a strong faith that we're gonna, we're gonna make some, we're gonna get some wins in here, Lord willing, you know? If God wants us there, we're gonna be there, but it's our, it's history, like, just to represent, you guys know Ashboro, there's almost a, there's a taco truck or a Mexican restaurant on every corner, like a church, like, or a gas station, and that's like, our people in leadership don't represent our town, which is almost 40% Latino plus, so that's, that's what we're trying to do, you know, be our face and the voice for our people.
Yeah, we need representation, and just someone who understands also what it's like to start from, come from immigrant parents too, you know? Because it's hard to understand it if you've never been through it, I will say, like, for, you know, I don't think you can relate as much, maybe?
For sure.
I don't know, but I love that, I literally got chills. That did.
Big time.
How, which, we kind of talked about this too, how do you plan to enhance unrepresented communities in decision-making? We talked about that, you're coming in with that perspective that, you know, we do, we grew up differently.
For sure.
Our parents grew up differently, we, like, even to open businesses, you know, like, that's something that we don't get taught, or our parents didn't get taught.
Right, right, I think, I think, yeah, we go back to, I think education's gonna be the big thing. Me and my wife and kids went to a wedding yesterday in the northern Raleigh area, kind of rural. We walk into the church, the big thing that stood out to me was that there was a sticker that said, no ICE, no warrant. So I could tell that's been an issue in that community, I'm sure, like, there's a lot of ICE raids, immigration issues, more than what we have in Ashboro. But that sticker says a lot, like, it's like education, right? Like, I know lawyers in town that, whenever that was a hot topic at the start of this year, we're giving out little postcards for your, know your rights for the Latino community. I don't know if you guys saw the little postcards? And, and so it's like, now we're gonna have to do a new 2.0 one with, things are about to get a little, if certain policies pass in October, a little, little more tough for our Latino community. So education, to answer your question, education, education is gonna be the key for, for everybody, you know? We're gonna have to create postcards or podcasts or something for our community, like, so they know like their rights and what to do in this situation, this situation, this situation. And just trying to help every, all communities, but especially, you know, for sure, our Latino community, they need that direly.
Yes.
Is there anyone who has inspired you?
Yeah, yeah, so before I left the house today, football started today, so I'm a big Russell Wilson fan, football player, married to the singer Ciara, I don't know if you guys know.
Yes. That's how we, you know, you said Ciara, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
I call my wife Ciara, because I feel like Russell Wilson, I love him as an athlete, as a faith guy, he's always praying before a game. I was watching him before I left the house, and he's like exactly my height, same frame, he, he's from, he went to school here at NC State.
Really?
I follow this guy, so I'm a, like, I love him as a man of God, a professional, he's big on nice dress, kid, family guy, him and Ciara, power, you know?
Yeah, they're a power couple.
If you guys think I'm cool, my wife is way on another level, she's got a master's degree, she's like, she's, she's a counselor in town, psychologist in town, like, bilingual de México también, so bilingual, you know, it's like, if you guys think I'm cool, my wife is even cooler, like, there's always like a good woman that backs you up and makes, helps you become, you know, who you are. And you guys hit on relationships, so that was my tangent there on relationships, but you know, so Russell Wilson, and definitely Ciara's in there, you know, it's my, my motivator, for sure, for sure.
But they, they do say, like, behind any man, it's like, who's, it's the woman, what does she think about you running?
Down, oh, yeah, she, she met me when I already had my business, so she knew, you know, you know, I was pretty well-known in the community, but then she's like, wow, okay. I didn't know this was a part of it, but she's just, she's my, my support system, you know, even last night, we had a speak, a speech at the Carver Center. And baby, my baby is so funny, she's like, she's like, literally, there's a stage, imagine that was a stage, right? She's literally like, we were, you know, all on our tables, a couple hundred people there, and our, my baby is like, you know, she's walking, just started walking, the good news. She's trying to go up on stage, like, she's fearless, and I literally, so when I got, it was my turn to speak, I think I was like the seventh one to speak. My baby obviously climbed up there, and I literally came up, I'm speaking, I carry her, it was beautiful moment, I said, dad, because like, like, she is not shy. I was like, and then, so my baby stole the show, and I was like, this is next generation, she's, she like, it's so beautiful, you know? Like, for me, like, that's something, something I didn't see, but my wife right there is holding it down with the baby, and they're keeping everything together, so I'm able to do these things, you know? So, right, you'll, you'll learn in a bit, but nap time is key. Our baby, we just got out of church, get our grocery shopping, put up the game, my wife put it at nap time, we have a system, we have a schedule. So my wife is the one that holds the house down, she made my house into a home, you know? It's like, they, they made, if I was successful before as a business owner, now it's, 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 if it was going like 70 miles an hour, now we're going 100, like, you know, that helps tremendously. So we can preach on that, bring me, bring, bring me back or bring us back.
Yes.
We love to do a podcast on relationships, she does a relationship therapy and.
Does she really?
Counselor, that's called couples therapy, family therapy.
Oh, that's so cool.
In bilingual, so I know, she's, she's kind of like my twin, as in like, you know, people know me for the physical therapy and massage therapy, and she's like the mental health, the very zen one, you know, like, I'm like 100 miles an hour, go, 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 give me the ball, you know? Let's go, Russell Wilson, right, let me throw the ball, and my wife is like, alright, let's relax, let's zen, let's listen, let's talk it out. So it helped me become a better man in person, and, you know, definitely that's my foundation.
Oh, shout out to her, now I want her to come on the podcast and give, give us some advice.
Now you know, she's in, she literally has her office on Cox Street, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know. What's her office, or what?
Uh, she works for a company, she, so she does like the Wellspring.
Okay.
Ayin Cox Street, where the dentists and insurance places are, yeah, behind Compare Foods.
Yes, I know exactly what you're talking about, that is awesome, well, shout out to her, because I do, you do, you know, that's the key to, like, a man, a man.
Having support.
Is having the support.
Hundred percent.
And that is amazing, and your daughter getting to see, like, your kids getting to see you do this, that's already like.
Amazing, so when, like, we have pictures for life, so, you know, that's amazing, it feels, just, it's an honor.
Is there anything you wanna tell to the younger generation who's watching that maybe wants to do something like this? Or wants to start a business, but all you hear is like, no, you shouldn't do this, this is not for you. What, is there anything you wanna say to?
Yeah, yeah, now you know we're a free resource at the college, so contact us, you know, we've had a lot of, it's crazy with my business, I do massage, so not, something completely different. But usually my patients love to talk, and they ask these questions like, hey, you have any advice on business? And yeah, come to the college, we'll give you free information. So you guys, now you know, that now more people know we're free, and we're there, we're there for you guys anytime. But it definitely helps to have like a, like a friend to be like, hey, look, this is what we recommend, this would be the right timing, even like, is this the right name? Like the Tell Me Good podcast, is that the right name? Or is there a name that, here's the option, A, B, C, D, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that can, you know, what do you think on this? You know, just little things like that, that we're there for you guys, but in regards to politics, as I said, we've got it already where people are like, hey, I wanna do that one day. So now, I'm going through it as of, I'm, I'm creating the pathway for the future, so they won't have to go through the circles, count me in as a mentor, win or lose, like, I'm gonna be here to be like, hey, this is what I did, here's the pluses, here's the negatives, here's, you know, what I would advise, you know? So you save time and money and everything during your campaign, but yeah, just count me in as a resource, that's what we're doing. And we're gonna share this news pretty early, probably like two weeks or so, but you guys know the Chamber of Commerce in Ashboro.
Yes.
They asked us to be like, I think it's called bilingual, small business for the chamber, like, it's gonna be like a new organization, right? That has never existed, so it's, even stuff like this, it's like, like, we're gonna be there for businesses at the college, with this Chamber of Commerce, and they're, they want, and the city too, they want us, the city to represent who we are, like Latino, 40% Latino. So us are being, creating this for the first time, and so we're gonna be the face, and then it's like, alright, you guys, y'all, y'all got next, you know? Like, we're gonna start it up, and then y'all got next, like, you know, as I step away, as I'm telling my, my new hire, I'm like, alright, I can step away now that you're good, you know? Like, you get it, you know, like, so that, that's what we're here for, for all, and especially with the campaign, for all the community, you know?
Yeah, here be anybody wanting to open.
Send them my way, yeah.
I'll send them your way, because.
Make an appointment.
And it's free. What? You can't, yeah.
Literally, people charge you like for that free info.
Yeah, it's like business coaching is, is not, and coaching in general is not free, or in most parts, and it's expensive. It's an investment, so the fact that y'all are doing this for free, get it while it's free, y'all.
A lot of people ask me like, like, why am I running? And what I tell people is like, you know how like, I, I'm sure you guys can tell, like, I'm giving back to my, the community, all communities now. But like, people, people did that to me, which is why now it's like, I feel like that responsibility to give it back, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
On a greater, because that's how I got there, I remember, I didn't tell you all my story, but I remember graduating, and I didn't wanna go to school, I was an athlete, I was a soccer player. I hated college, right, and I was like, I tried it for six months, for one semester, and I was like, no, this is not for me, school is not for me. And then, and then I was like, alright, let me work a little bit, I went, and then I was like, alright, let me, let me go back to college. But even, even I had teachers along the way that were like, Kevin, you have like potential, and I remember, I didn't even believe in myself, and there was, oh, you're good. There was a, oh, that's our timer.
No, but you're good, you're good, keep going, keep it rolling.
So I remember I had teachers along the way that were like, Kevin, I don't know what you're gonna do, but you're gonna be successful, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a therapist, you do anything you want, you're gonna be successful, and I was like, I remember watching, I was like, like, you know, why is this doctor telling me this? Like, you know, like, like, I, I just didn't believe it, right? But after you get one teacher, in college, I had another teacher that, throughout high school, undergrad, I passed like As, Bs and Cs, like maybe a few Ds. I wasn't the best student, but I, I was a hard worker, so I always passed, but there was, once I got to a really tough class in college, my teachers were like, Kevin, like, have you ever had any like learning deficits or any kind of issues with learning? And I was like, honestly, like, during my whole, every time, college, I was working full-time, I was, you know, doing my dad duties, doing this, like, school is something like I did kind of on the side. It was still full-time, trust me, full-time, full-time, but like, I never really fully invested in it, like 100%. Once I got to that level where you had to, there was this teacher that was, I'll never forget, that believed in me so, she did some tests on me, some, and then she's like, Kevin, you definitely, did anybody tell you you had any kind of learning deficit? And I was like, no, but like, you, so she's like, check this out, you know, and I was like, wow, like, nobody, I'm, I'm in my mid-20s, and nobody, nobody knew about, like, I, I, you know? I was just like, I was lost in the trenches, probably, like, I did fine, so a counselor in my high school at that point in time was never like, hey, you can go to college. They were like, where are you gonna go to work, you know?
Yeah.
And see, that's, that's the stuff I wanna change, like, but in later on in life, I had the right people that were, this lady was like, Kevin, I call her my grandma. She's like, Kevin, I'm willing to, if you wanna put in the work, I'm willing to stay with you one hour after school every single day, because I know you need that extra. And she, this is a doctor, she has a practice, practices, and, and, and I'm just like, wow, like, yeah, like, count me in, like, you know, she's, she's basically like, put in the work, and I'm gonna help you get your degree, and I was like, how could I say no to that, you know? Like, most people, any other teacher, like in the past that I had, would just let me fail, and just be like, oh, one less student to take care of, you know? But this, I had, I just got super blessed with mentors, teachers that believed in me, and that's how I got here, you know? And so now it's my turn to give that back, I'm at that point in my career where thankfully, everything's really well with the business, so now it's time for me to do more than just my business, to, to give back to my community, and that's why I'm here, so it's not about me, it's about helping others, all communities, like, I think we can do a lot. Like, I wasn't as excited whenever, I was so new to me, I wasn't that excited whenever I ran, because I was like, I don't wanna put any pressure, I just, we'll, we'll run. And then seeing people so excited and like, seeing the impact, I'm, now I'm pumped, I'm like, you know what? Like, at first I was like, you know, even if we lose, we're gonna make history, and, and it's gonna impact thousands. But now, like today, like, there's so much excitement that I'm like, holy, I think we're gonna win this, like, like, I think we have a really strong chance, like, we're projected to be one of the top. So, I mean, Lord willing, like, people show out, we make some history, and, and then, and then, yeah, y'all, y'all, y'all got next.
We were part of it, hey, we were part of the history.
Y'all got next, you know?
So I think you can feel your energy and your passion through us sitting here, I hope that you guys can feel it through the screen and through his voice, because you can literally feel it. How did your faith come about?
Faith was in college, actually, like here, I went to school here in Greensboro, so I don't know how much time, but if y'all want me to spill that, but I went to school here at UCG, down the block, right?
Okay.
So there is kind of where my spirituality kind of started to grow, I wanted to really like know more about God, I was raised Catholic, and then I, long story short, I really felt really comfortable in the Christian church, kind of more learning a little bit deeper, you know? So my parents, my family is mostly so Catholic, but some of, some of us are also Christianity, like, yeah, a mixture, fine balance there. Where it's like, we all respect each other, and it's all about God at the end of the day, it's not about, you know, it's not about this denomination or anything like that, but that's where my faith first started. So my early, early to mid-20s, and then something that just, it was a game changer, because that's sort of like, like I told you guys earlier with, if you wouldn't have knew me at 18, I was just an athlete, a regular guy, who really didn't have a, a chance to become like very successful on paper, I was probably gonna be a statistic, right? Like a lot of the kids that we grew up in my neighborhood, but God, I mean, it was just, you know, from that point on, when you give your life to God, it has been just straight blessings. Obviously, a little, there's gonna be tough things, right, we all have to, you know, life, but with God, you can do it at a better, like, you can handle it better. You know, you have that faith, and, and I wouldn't change it for anything, you know, so I speak a lot about my faith and God, and, you know, that's a, it's bigger than me. Like, I'm here, you know, but I think God put me here.
Yeah, I agree.
I wasn't supposed to be here, but here I am, you know, that's the way I look at it, so, strong faith. I wasn't supposed to be here, but here I am, you know? That's the way I look at it, so strong faith.
Yeah, and I think when you know you're in, doing like what God's calling is for you, it becomes easier, like you running for city council, it's difficult. But you're like, God, I don't know, I feel this push and, and you feel like it's God's calling to you. And with that, it's like, you feel at peace with that. It feels right.
Hundred percent. Yeah, definitely. I'm, trust me, if you guys give me the, I'll keep talking for hours. Well, but I'll definitely share, but we'll have to bring my wife in one day, but even every little decision, like when you with God, it's like, I know, like praying, praying for your partner, right? That's a big one. I know you guys talked about on the podcast. Like for me, that was my wife, when I remember praying about it, not in my timing, but in God's timing, he's like, Kevin, here's your, your literally like, I guess what I had prayed for and above expectation, you know, like even like, it's, it's crazy, like, you know, I prayed about it for years. And then God's like in his time, I had to learn and go through, you know, like tough relationships and heartbreaks and et cetera, et cetera. But then when I met my wife, I was like, wow, thank you, God, I had to go through that, I had to go through those heartbreaks. And to like be ready for my wife now today, you know, so it was like, that was just a quick little highlight. I can, I can literally talk about an hour on just marriage and like how God, you know, does that to you with time and patience. Yeah, I literally preached about that for an hour. That's why I love you guys doing this, cuz like you guys, like I, from the, what I saw y'all's podcast, y'all go into these tough topics that nobody wants to talk about. You know, like, like there's nothing to, nothing to hide, you know, we all have our past, that doesn't represent us today, like today. God, God's got us here for a reason. That's why we all met, we have a lot of mutual friends, you know, and all that, and that's why we're here today.
Yeah, that is true. And I think even us, we've struggled with that, like with being on the podcast, we'll be like, ah, did we say too much? Should we not have said that? We're like, no, it's part of who we are and I think that you connect with people when you can be your true vulnerable self. Talk about your failures, talk about your mistakes, because if everyone thinks you're perfect, like how are you ever gonna relate to a perfect person? No, no one can relate to that.
Exactly. And you guys can tell, I'm, I'm very sure that I'll be being like, I'm not the perfect person at all. Thankfully now, you know, we're doing pretty well. But we all, I, I came from the bottom, you know, to get here, you know, and that, I'm proud of it too. I wouldn't change it any other way, like I love being an underdog and being, I'm used to being usually the only Latino in the room, sure you guys can, can relate to that, you know, I'm used to it. So I feel very comfortable being that right now, you know, and, and I'm hoping to change that. So I'm not the only Latino in the room, everywhere we go and, and big, big things, you know?
I had asked, well, somebody that kind of put us in contact. I was like, do you have any questions for him? Is there a plan for homelessness? He wants to know.
Uh, yeah, so there's a couple of different plans. Uh, they just opened up uh men's shelter. I think it's the first one in Ashboro recently. Usually they focus a lot on women, which is great, but they just gave us the numbers yesterday. There was two hundred and fifty homeless people in Ashboro two years ago. Last year it was one twenty five. Today it's eighty eight. So now we have uh to try to get, you know, obviously every city has it. Like we're here in Greensboro, that's, it's bigger. And you can tell when you're driving up the highway, they're doing like tiny homes and stuff. That takes a lot of money. I don't know if Ashboro has that money, but we're the ones that make, help vote for these decisions. Um, I do have a plan. And I'm not sure if it's gonna get accepted or rejected, but we have a um, I can't tell you full details yet, but we have that bus system in North Ashboro. I don't know if you guys seen it. That area has a lot, in, in my opinion, there's a potential there. It's not used too much. So there's a potential there to do something short term. Like quick for the winter months, come vision I have. Um, not sure if they're gonna like it or not, but we're gonna at least propose it, right? If Lord willing, given the opportunity. But there's other uh people that are there already that, so uh three seats from the city council people are there and one of the guys who's running for reelection, we literally talked about this yesterday, that's homelessness in Ashboro is top five. It's off top five, like concerns in Ashboro, that's top five. So so we have like a plan, we can't put it out yet, but we do, we're, we have a plan in action. And you know, and that's where this is basically to explain, that's where we have a mayor, we have council members, we vote and reject and allocate budgets, funding to try to help out the community. And, and that's literally what, what our, our, behind the scenes, the stuff we're looking at every single day to try to help all the communities and address all the problems, you know? That's a good one. So I don't know if I answered that to the best of my ability, but tried to, to answer it with what I know today. But given the opportunity, we will be, that's, that's top five, I'll tell you that right now. Top five uh concerns in Ash.
And if anybody else has any concerns that you wanna leave in the comments, please do. And we could do a part two, cuz I feel like there's so much. We would stay a little bit longer. We always go a little bit over, but we do have somebody else that we are interviewing after him. Real quick, before we close out, can you give us more information on where to vote, who can vote? Um, is there a link that we can put in the bio or any information you want us to include?
Yes, so just I would say look me up on Facebook, Kevin Garcia, uh always link it to my business, Garcia Sports Therapy on Instagram, Facebook. All those pages, Google us. Um, but the big date is September eighteenth. So mark your calendars, September eighteenth, which is about a week and a half from now. So, so there's so many people running in Ashboro. I'm competing with fourteen, uh sorry, we're fourteen people, I'm competing against thirteen other people. They're, they're gonna do an elimination round, just so you guys gonna get a setup. So this is very important. That's why I'm telling all my campaign friends, like September eighteenth through October third is the round one. So we have to, to be able to win. We have to get people to come out and vote early, so we make it to round two. So out of um fourteen of us, eight go to the primaries, which is from October sixteenth through November fourth, election day. So we have to come out and show out early and vote, get the, get, get the people there. And then Lord willing, we make it to the second round. Then it's like, alright, we're gonna have to come do it again, but this time we know we're gonna be top eight in our for city council. So that's, mayor has to go through that. Um, education doesn't and sheriff is later on. So all, it's more mayor and myself and with uh city council, we have to go through that elimination round. So just head to I, it's, it's nonpartisan, there's no um Republican, there's no Democrat. It's, people are voting for the person. So there's no, you don't have to, or independent, this, it's like they're really voting for the person. So it's more important and I, that's, that's a big reason I'm here, to motivate our young community that can vote that from eighteen plus, you know, just bring your ID. And come through those times, uh polls open at eight AM, close at five Monday through Friday. And they are open uh some Saturdays. Look up the page, I'm gonna post it on my page, especially since campaign time is about to ramp up in a week or so. So just stay tuned on my page and yeah, follow us there. If you guys, any, if you guys want any lawn signs, contact me, like people are doing, I still have a couple to deliver. Um, anything you guys need, just any questions, holler at me, you know? We do a, a round two, part two of this if needed. Yeah, yeah, that would be great, honestly, cuz um we do get like ten days of a, a break to like campaign before the next poll opens, so it's round one and then break ten days and then round two. So that's perfect, yeah.
We could do that. And then we'll put in the description where the polls are at, cuz
Board of Elections. Is gonna be where the, the main one is right now for early voting. This, the primaries, the second one is gonna be at there, which is right there, uh random uh Board of Elections, but there's also gonna be three other churches and a school. So we'll, we'll put that later on, but right now, I'm telling everybody Board of Elections, fill up that day, let's fill that thing up, mark your calendars, like, let's go.
And you have to live in the city of Ashboro?
City Limits, yeah.
In the city limits.
Expecting to be a record number of people coming out to vote. So it's gonna be, everything is gonna be history. There's never been so many people that are excited about politics, you know?
That is our episode today and thank you, Kevin, for being here. You've shared, yeah, you've shared so much good info. I feel like I know We'll leave more information in the description. We'll love to have you back and your wife. Thank you for coming. Is there any last things you wanna say before we close out?
Nah, I'm just thankful for you guys and honored to be here and keep doing what you're doing, alright? We'll be in touch.
Thank you guys for watching. Bye.